Very exciting night for us. It's the culmination of months of work, literally months of work. City Council essentially initiates the 2017 budget process with City Council's Winter Planning Retreat, which this year happened on January 23rd, 2016. Right at the front end, I want to thank the work of our finance staff. A tremendous amount of work, hundreds of hours of work by our talented and intelligent staff, helps us get to this point. Cheryl Carson's happens to be on vacation this week, a well-deserved break for her. But I do want to thank Cheryl, Armando Guardiola, and Mark Smith. Armando and Mark are here. They've done a tremendous job improving on the processing and helping us get to this point. So, thank you very much, finance staff. As a quick preamble, Section 7.4 of the city's charter, Paragraph D, under City Manager Functions, Powers, and Duties, says, "To cause a proposed budget to be prepared annually and submitted to the council and be responsible for the administration of the budget after its adoption, all in accordance with this charter and under the policies formulated by council." So that's a big part of why we're here tonight. It's my job to recommend to you a budget. Please understand, it is a recommendation. A tremendous amount of work has gone into the budget to this point, but when it's adopted, it's crucial that it be your budget. So, our recommendations to you are just that. And the purpose tonight is to walk through that proposed budget again, answer any questions you have, make any adjustments that you would like us to make. It is critical for us to get clear direction from you tonight about the proposed budget, because additional staff work kicks into gear after tonight to assemble the official budget book and get the budget document itself prepared for the formal adoption process, which begins the first meeting in October. So our goal tonight is to answer your questions, sort through any outstanding items, and we do have a short list of things for council to work through, and make any other adjustments that you believe we need to make so that we can assemble the proposed budget. So with that, I'd like to walk through, in high-level fashion, my budget recommendations. This is a refined version of what you first saw on July 25th at the study session. It incorporates the latest numbers as recently as the study session on August 8th, and additional research that we've done to refine the numbers that are in the budget. We certainly begin the budget process by focusing on good characteristics of a proper budget process. We do take a long-term perspective. The budget is an important tool in lining up resources towards important objectives in the next year, and it's a planning document for, in this case, the year after that in 2018. But our work to assemble the budget takes a long-term perspective. We don't want to simply look out a year or two, although that's ultimately what the budget document does show. It does establish linkages to broad organizational goals. The budget is a tool. It lines up resources to the right work, as defined by council, to make sure that we are getting the right work done. And our resources are limited. As we discuss every year as part of the budget process, our needs in the community still outweigh our available resources. We do want to focus budget decisions on results and outcomes. A big focus for us at the staff level is to make sure the work that we're doing achieves the outcomes the city council and the community need us to achieve. It's not enough for staff to work hard every day. It's our goal to achieve important outcomes that are measurable. And it also involves and promotes effective communication with stakeholders. This budget is better than the last budget, which was better than the last budget, and incorporating feedback from stakeholders within the community. So I think that's a positive part of our budget process this year. Key considerations for 2017, based on our prior discussions with city council, clearly completing the 2K projects is a key emphasis for us. It's important to build high-quality facilities. We want to make sure we build them in such a way that lowers our long-term maintenance costs. We have committed ourselves to spending taxpayer dollars wisely and transparently throughout the 2K process, and it's crucial that we complete projects on time. It's also important for us to balance these new capital investments with our ability to maintain and operate facilities and maintain service levels within the community, which is continually a challenge, because the community keeps growing. And as I mentioned previously, we continue to focus on managing and budgeting towards achieving specific outcomes. Some additional key considerations for 2017. We anticipate that the 2017 work plan, based on resources being allocated in the budget, will continue important internal work to improve the organization. As we grow and expand the community, it's our desire to grow the organization in thoughtful ways and be as proactive as we can about change. A certain amount of change will be thrust upon us that we'll be reacting to, but our organizational development work is a collection of activities aimed at proactive change within the organization to continually move towards best practices. As always, we are intensely focused on meeting council and community expectations. Although we have a lot of smart people that work for the city, our direction comes from the community and city council. We're fortunate to be able to give you a lot of advice and recommendations, but ultimately, council sets that direction for us, and it's our goal with this budget to meet your expectations, meet the expectations within the Commerce City community. I believe this budget also demonstrates alignment with council goals. Again, council sets that direction. It's our responsibility to demonstrate alignment with council's goals, and I think this budget does that. As I mentioned, this budget also includes more engagement from the public. City Council has given us clear direction to continually explore ways to further engage our capital improvement program, Citizen Advisory Committee, in prioritizing and vetting capital projects, and we've done a better job this year of doing that than we did last year. I mentioned city council's planning retreat in January of this year. At that time, along with identifying the other priorities that I talked about on the previous slides, city council had a great day-long session to talk about longer-term goals, sort of post-2K, and other priorities that staff needs to begin working on. Want to let you know that those council goals that are listed on the left side of the slide have been matched up with funding and resources to continue working on implementing those council goals. The top priority was looking at grade separation at 120th and US 85. The budget does include funding for an environmental reevaluation, which is an early step towards crafting a doable capital project to actually grade-separate 120th and US 85. This budget includes $81,000 to continue a housing needs assessment, to further refine what we understand to be the need for additional senior housing in this community, which is also an important document needed by the federal Housing and Urban Development Department as part of our CDBG program. We have included in the budget $75,000 for a needs assessment and a feasibility study for competitive athletic fields in the northern part of the city. The budget does not include a specific allocation to assist with the DOJ assessment that's about to get underway with our department, with our police department, but without a doubt, city resources will be utilized to help further that assessment during 2017. And then finally, city council would like to further redevelopment studies in two potential areas in our community, the Irondale area and the Clermont neighborhood. City council has already authorized an infrastructure study for the Irondale neighborhood. What I am suggesting is that we complete that infrastructure study for the Irondale neighborhood and make an appropriation for additional study of one of those two areas after we see the results of that Irondale infrastructure study, which we think will have the results to that study sometime in early 2017. I touched on this earlier. The budget process is really a continuous cycle. The budget process for the 2017 budget really did start with city council's planning retreat in January. That's been a good shift for council. We start the budget process earlier than we used to, which gives staff more time to explore priorities identified by council. We can work those things into reasonable budget requests, instead of earmarking funds in the budget without having a solid idea of what we're going to try to accomplish. That's followed by the internal work that staff does to begin assembling requests to be considered as part of the budget. This year included work by the city council retreat subcommittee, and that's brought us to the draft budget, which is being presented to you again tonight. After tonight, with good direction from council, we will assemble the formal budget and begin the formal adoption process. And shortly after the budget's adopted in November, we start planning for council's planning retreat in January of 17. So I think this has been a good practice for us. It helps reinforce that budgeting and achieving a future vision for this community is a constant cycle. It's a pipeline that we're constantly filling. These next few slides are a high-level summary of what's included in the recommended budget. It's a flavor for the number of recommendations that come from the organization that ultimately I make final decisions on and include in the recommended budget. I sent out to you on Friday a detailed listing of all of the budget requests across the organization. That's maybe more information than you wanted, but it's a true picture of what's been requested at the staff level and gives a sense for how difficult the budget process is. If you look through that list, there is not a frivolous request anywhere in those department requests. It furthers the notion that needs in our community, needs in the organization exceed our available funding. So the budget process is a challenge. It's a challenge to identify what the top priorities are so that we can recommend a budget that funds those top priorities. And so, of those requests, there were 28 positions, new positions requested. These are full-time equivalent adds to the organization. Of those 28, I am recommending six. I'm not recommending 11, and we are moving a number of them to 2018 because of their relationship to 2K projects. And we can answer more questions, if you like, about those as we're going through. In terms of budget enhancements, there were 27 submitted. I approved eight. I do not recommend approval 19. And a word about budget enhancements. Budget enhancements are permanent additions to the budget that are not personnel. These are additions to the budget that we would not just pay for once, but continually pay for as years go forward. So, new positions and budget enhancements receive additional scrutiny because of the permanent addition to the budget. Furniture requests and special consideration items, these are considered one-time requests. There may be some maintenance associated with buying equipment, but for the most part, the expense is a one-time expense. There were only two submitted under the furniture and equipment category. One was approved, one is not recommended for approval. Special consideration items, three are in the recommended budget, three are not. And if you look through that detailed sheet that was sent out on Friday, we listed all of the budget requests based on these categories, and then we listed them again based on the department that asked for them, just to give you another way to review the information. In terms of additional facilities requests, there were seven submitted. One is being recommended, six are not. It's worth noting, in a number of the cases where I'm not recommending funding something in the budget, the notes indicate other alternatives. In some cases, we've recommended that an item be covered under the existing year's budget. We believe there will be sufficient funds in the department's existing budget to meet that need, or we are suggesting that they submit that request again for the next budget cycle in 2018. There were very few items in that list where we simply said, "No, never." Mostly, it's, "We're not going to fund it in the 2017 budget. Please use existing funds in your current budget to meet that need," or plan to submit it again, and we'll consider it again as part of the 2018 budget cycle. In terms of vehicles and equipment, there were 17 submitted. I'm recommending four. An additional 10 are being recommended, but funded through the capital improvement program, and one is not being recommended. Total requests submitted were $3.5 million. Just over 2.6 million are not recommended for funding in the general fund portion of the 2017 budget. Looking at the budget in terms of total dollars, this is the general fund portion of the budget. We have a separate slide that lays out the 2K portion of our general fund budget. We anticipate operating revenues of just under $60 million. Operating budget requests, those things that I summarized on the prior slides, totals $55.1 million. There are some transfers that occur on an annual basis. Total revenue minus expenditures is $1.2 million. Then we transfer almost $1.4 million to the CIP program to fund capital projects. After that, we are reallocating excess 2015 revenue. That revenue, that excess revenue sits in our general fund balance, but I've drawn a distinction between utilizing prior year's fund balance and using fund balance from 2015. We ended 2015 on a positive note. We spent less than we generated in terms of revenue. We've re-appropriated some of that revenue. It's my proposal that we take an additional $400,000 of excess 2015 revenue and reallocate it to the 2017 budget. Allows us to fund some important programs, but it does not reduce our general fund fund balance below pre-2015 levels, if that makes sense. And we're happy to answer more questions about that, if you'd like that. By utilizing $400,000 of that excess 2015 revenue, we do have some excess revenue over expenditures in this proposed 2017 budget. So if city council makes decisions to spend additional money tonight, we do not have to make other changes to the budget. We can simply use some of this excess $217,000 in revenue. If city council has initiatives that would exceed this 217, we'll have to have a further discussion about how we fund that. Should we take money away from other things in the recommended budget, or would you like us to use additional general fund fund balance? But we could talk about that as we get further into the discussion tonight. We do track 2K funds separately. The 2K budgeted sales and use tax revenue for 2017 is estimated to be $11.2 million. We anticipate an additional $255,000 in revenue from the Paradise Island pool. By the way, projecting revenue is another important job of the finance staff, and it's not easy work. We have a subsequent set of slides that lists the various sources of our revenue. We don't simply apply an estimated increase across the board to all of those revenue sources. A fair amount of analysis goes into truly projecting what we anticipate the revenue to be in those different revenue categories, and revenue from the pool is no different. We anticipate bond payments for the 2014 bond issue of $4.5 million. We are estimating bond payments for the tranche of debt we're about to issue at $2.4 million. We also have some budget requests that are being funded through 2K, and we have some additional money that we're setting aside in reserve to help us through the first few years of operating and maintaining the new 2K facility. So that's the total of that, almost $4.5 million, such that we don't intend necessarily any fund balance. However, a fair portion of that $4.5 million is what we would call reserve, to help us operate and maintain the 2K facilities over the first few years until our anticipated revenue catches up to what we estimate our O&amp;M expenses to be. I mentioned the numerous sources of revenue that we have to operate on an annual basis. I won't go through these in detail. These numbers, let me ask a question to staff. Did these numbers change since we presented these numbers on July 25th? Have we refined these?
We did.
So they have been tweaked. We're constantly looking at the latest information that we receive in 2016 revenue so that we can continually update and give you the best estimates of 2017 revenue. They are still conservative estimates. We certainly believe we should project our budget expenditures based on a conservative estimate of revenues, and that's what this lists here. So we have certainly a number of taxes that either are generated by us directly or are shared with us through other agencies. We have additional licenses and permits that generate fees. We have a number of charges for services across the organization that generate operating revenue as well. Fines and forfeitures, primarily through our municipal court, generates additional...
Can I just go back to the prior slide with taxes? I know we're breaking out discreetly the marijuana licensing now, but the taxes that we see or anticipate seeing from that industry, would it be possible to see a breakout of what we estimate that proportion of our sales and use tax to be? I know there's certainly questions in the community about what the impact of these businesses are on the community, and it'd like to be able to help illustrate.
That's a very good question and something that we discussed as well. What quality of information do we have so far on marijuana taxes? And that's the challenge. We have very little of it so far. I think we've licensed our first retail business just a few months ago. And was that our first business that was licensed? So last week, we received our very first tax payment. There just isn't enough information there to do any sort of...
Understood. So, as those revenues start to come in over time, we'll anticipate being able to see that in some way?
Absolutely.
Great.
There are some additional revenues that, again, we receive through other government agencies. That all adds up to a grand total of revenue, both 2K and non-2K revenue at our disposal to create an operating budget for 2017. So the numbers that you saw on the prior slides all add up to that $71.4 million. Once again, this is a summary presented in a slightly different way. We've listed the revenue sources a little bit differently, but the numbers match what we showed on that prior slide. We have a total amount of general fund operating revenues. We've reallocated, proposing to reallocate some excess 2015 revenues. From that, we deduct our anticipated expenses, leaving us with a little bit of revenue above our expenses to carry in to the 2017 year. Also wanted to take a few minutes and walk you through the proposed capital improvements plan for 2017. Again, I don't believe any of this will be new information. We may have refined some of the numbers, but it'll be information that we've presented to you over the past few weeks, kind of repackaged here, in case you have additional discussion or wish to make some different decisions. It is, we are steadily crafting a more sustainable five-year capital project planning process. That's another important improvement for the organization. And the nature of the projects that we're planning certainly require more advanced work. Some of the projects that council identified back in January are long-term projects that are going to take five years plus for us to manage. So this is a very positive step for us. Where we are in this year's process is to lay out a proposed list of projects that's very refined for the next couple of years, and then, to be honest, gets a little fuzzier as we go out beyond the next two-year period. Part of that is intentional because of the number of projects that we have on our plate currently and council's direction to us, that we make sure we get those projects done. KPCAC has been an important source of information this year as sounding boards for the community to help us validate priorities going forward. There are a number of funding sources that we've historically used to fund capital projects. This is a listing of them here, and you can see, the general fund has typically not been a giant source of revenue. We haven't been able to afford dedicating a tremendous amount of general fund dollars. Fortunately, we have a number of other sources of revenue to help fund capital projects, and again, we're happy to answer additional questions as we're going forward about specific funding sources.
Brian, can you just, I know we've got folks that are hopefully tuned in tonight watching, and I know we talked about this in our last study session, in terms of some of the shifts we're making in terms of dedicating pieces of revenue, some of these streams specifically to the CIPP, which may have, in practice, been used in a roundabout way to fund capital improvement efforts, but we did so after they showed up in the general fund, and then we sort of reallocated those in this new format. Can we just highlight the items here that historically showed up in the general fund and then were reallocated? We're really zeroing these in upfront and identifying these as defined contributors to the capital improvement revenue pool, right?
Yes, and I was just scanning through. I think, if I'm not mistaken, we have a slide that lays out the funding source for pavement management going forward. Not all, it won't cover all of our pavement management needs, but we're proposing this year to dedicate a source of outside funding to pavement management.
The biggest shift is the Adco Road and Bridge Fund. That's the one that's about $497,000 that used to be in the general fund, and our intent is to make that shift permanently to CIPP and specifically pavement management.
That's great, and I think it's important to just call out, I mean, to sort of supplement Brian's comments on the shifts that we've been making. I mean, the general fund, we haven't really had, yes, those dollars, but in looking differently, and to your earlier point about our shifts in terms of the five-year CIP, by taking that longer look, we can take these steps to start to more discreetly direct these dollars, so it's a more proactive or active budgeting effort as opposed to a reactive and trying to find ways to, you know, bring the dollars together to make a project happen. And I think the hat's off to staff for really putting their work into evolving this process. I think, not easy to sort of distill it into a few comments to make clear to the general public, but I don't want it to go without saying or recognizing the effort. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We've had discussions in the past about the importance of maintaining the infrastructure within our community, but that's not always easy. Those aren't always easy decisions for council to make, and so, I agree, this is an important step towards identifying funding to put towards maintaining roads within our community. Doesn't mean it always has to be done that way, but it's a way to reinforce your emphasis on taking care of existing roads within our community.
I noticed that some of the councils wanted to plug in here, and I want you all to know, just give my attention, you're welcome to ask a question at the time we're going over it, so that it's quicker time. I know Mr. Knowles had a question about a previous slide, dealing with the new positions, the ones that were approved and not approved. Go ahead, Mr. Knowles.
Certainly, yes, thank you. I didn't know if we were going to go through this and then go back, and I didn't want to have to go back after we went down several slides. Asked about the new positions, 11 for 2018 and 6, what are those 6, because it says 28 were submitted, correct? So 11, no, 6, yes, and then 11 for 18. So what are those six positions that you're recommending for new positions?
They are listed in the presentation that I sent out on Friday. If you'd like, would you like me to take a moment and walk through all of those?
Yes, I saw that, but it just didn't break down, you know, it said salaries and wages, but it didn't point out the positions that were, as far as the title of the position. They're departments, but not...
Bear with me here while I identify it in my sheet. The new position request form, yep, got it. Positions that are included in the recommended budget is a Building Safety Plans Examiner. It's an additional plans examiner that would be located in Building Safety and Community Development. The CDBG Coordinator that would take on the responsibility of primary administration of CDBG funds as we become an entitlement community. An Information Technology Enterprise Application Coordinator, which is a new position in the IT department aimed at helping us manage the various pieces of software that are used throughout the organization by operating departments. Police Department Information Technology Technician, that is a new position focused on what we call turning wrenches in the police department. The police department has a... The police department has a great deal of technology that they use in their department that's unique to the police department, so it's identifying a technology person that would work in the police department to sort of be their own help desk for the technology that they are using within the police department. And the Parks Operations Technician, that's essentially converting a variable hour employee to a full-time. So those are the six that are being recommended for funding in the 2017 budget. On the very next page of that presentation, we have, did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry, there's one at the very top of that page. That's right. We are adding an additional human resources technician. It's a new position in terms of skill level between a human resources generalist and an administrative specialist. So some technical ability to help with the volume of work that's coming through our human resources department, but not quite as expensive as a human resources generalist, if that makes sense. So those are the six that are included. The red positions that are listed after that are the positions that were requested, but I'm not recommending.
Okay. Had a question about our police department as far as bringing new officers on, our promotions. Do we ever have a, or do we hire outside for assessment on officers? Was that internal or was that, we contracted that out?
It's both. Some of the assessment of potential candidates is done by internal staff and some of it is done by an outside consultant. A quick note about police department patrol positions. We are still working to hire enough officers to get us back to budgeted levels in addition to that in order to continually fill the hiring pipeline. I previously authorized the department to continue what we call over-hiring up to 10 positions beyond what's authorized. So if the department were to fill every vacant position, because that's a dynamic situation, I have authorized the department to continue hiring above authorized levels based on the assumption that it's fluid and dynamic enough that that'll help us get to and stay at that full staffing level, if that's helpful.
Okay. And then on the police department, is that just for officers? That's not for upper management, right? Just, we're looking to fill those officers that are vacant first before we hire for any more upper management, is that correct?
Well, we're working to fill any vacancy anywhere within the organization. There's been no authorization to overhire at the command staff level, only an authorization to overhire at the patrol level. So there's no necessarily priority, but I will tell you, we've had an easier time hiring command positions than we have in hiring patrol positions. But anytime there's a vacancy, we're working to fill it.
Okay. I don't know if we could end this budget to maybe double those efforts for patrol because I know we are lacking a lot in that department. We don't know the outcome of the Department of Justice is going to, what that's going to be, but I'd like to see if we can increase the budget to double up the efforts to hire more patrol officers.
I believe your suggestion is, are there additional resources we can include in the budget to help us accelerate the hiring process? We can explore that. Using outside assessors has helped us. Sending non-certified employees through the police academy at our expense has helped us, but we can absolutely explore, is there any other set of resources that we could utilize to help further accelerate the hiring process? I don't know of any, because we've provided that direction. What do we need to hire faster without sacrificing the quality of who we're hiring? But I can absolutely take that back to staff and see, and if that did require some resources that weren't available in the budget, we could always bring that back to council as a reappropriation.
Okay. And then I know last year, we said we had enough building inspectors in the permit process as far as going to homes, looking at, because we have an increase of new permits coming for new homes being built. And I know we looked at contracting that out for the extra person. And going forward here, knowing, I believe Richmond said they're going to build like 7,000 homes in the area. Is there looking at hiring another two more inspectors this year?
At this point, no. We think we have enough inspectors, and I'll ask Mr. Kramer to chime in. We did add another building inspector in, was it the 20, is it the current budget? 2015 or 2016? So we, council did authorize an additional building inspector in the 2016 budget. We did hire another building inspector, and that has helped us meet our performance objectives in terms of conducting building inspections. We are struggling to keep up with plan reviews, so that's the reason for recommending another plans examiner as opposed to another building inspector. Anything else you would want to add?
Yeah, I was going to emphasize the point that we actually just requested an additional inspector this last budget cycle, and you approved that, and so we actually upped our total building inspector number just this last year. It is a balancing act with a job, with that whole division is so closely tied, and their workload is so closely tied to an industry that goes up and down. And so, you know, Mr. McBroom was in this seat as well, and so he totally gets the challenge that exists of striking that balance. We don't want to completely overhire than the market corrects, and we are stuck with, not stuck with, that's the wrong phrase. We are left trying to optimize the resources of some inspectors whose days may not be as filled as they are now. And so we are constantly, while it's not in the budget this year, I didn't request it, therefore Mr. McBroom didn't react to it, we are constantly trying to measure that. And if we need to try and bring some outside resources, I will tell you, we're going to need to do that this year due to the demand. We are constantly trying to stay on top of it, but it is a never-ending process of monitoring the data to see where we're going, looking at reports. It is possible that at this time next year, there is a position request for that.
Okay, thanks.
Before moving on, hopefully that's on, Dominic's at home wondering why he can't hear me, so that's for Dominic. Before we move on, I just want to make sure that all the council gets our questions asked up to this point in time, and I know Jason had his hand up. He'll pass, anyone else? Andrew?
Yes, thank you. I think this is a good slide to just kind of look at our funding sources. And so when I started council in 2012, there was not 2K ballot initiative. And understanding the study that we had last week with the albatross and the debt service payment, for those out there that simply don't understand that because it's complex, we need to carry that debt service for some time, and these are the funding sources that we have in front of us. And so until we can get the new rec center up and running, we will have some debt service. So I just want to say thank you to staff because it is a tough challenge to figure out how much money you're going to need, and these funding sources are how we are achieving it. So I just want to say good job to staff and especially the way that we're going to carry that debt service for the next couple of years, at least three years. So here we go. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? Saying no one, go ahead, Brian.
And please don't hesitate. Going back in the slides is perfectly fine. We're here to answer every and all questions you have about the information. There's a lot of it here. We understand, we sent an awful lot of stuff out. All right. Continuing along, we have worked with city council to refine a philosophy towards capital projects. Again, as we discussed, city council's direction to us is to focus on our existing commitments, primarily the 2K projects and the other significant capital projects that are underway, for example, Highway 2. We are focused on effective project management and getting those projects completed within schedule and within budget. We've discussed limiting new projects so that we can focus on maintaining existing service levels and again, meet those significant existing commitments that we've already made. So on the subsequent pages, we identified with a diamond those projects that represent an existing commitment, and a star represents work that we're advancing in 2017 related to a council priority identified back in January of this year. Additionally, we have committed based upon council's direction to get additional input from KIPCAC in advance of council's winter retreat next January. So it's a continuing effort to further involve KIPCAC in the important job of prioritizing capital projects within the Commerce City community. Additionally, you will see some changes in our approach to funding capital projects. In years past, we knew we had outside sources of funding coming in during the budget year. We would line those up to projects during that same budget year. We are suggesting a shift towards accumulating the money in one year and then spending it on projects in the following year. At times in the past, depending on when the expense hit, if we had not received the revenue yet, there was a mad scramble to make sure we could meet our obligations. It'll take us some time to fully implement this approach, but it'll help make sure that when we initiate projects, we already have the funding on hand to be able to cover those expenses. We also think there needs to be some additional discussion amongst council on long-term capital needs. We talked about this idea of earmarking funds, an outside source of funds for pavement management that helps us with pavement management, but we have other capital maintenance needs that we struggle every year to properly fund and plan for those expenses. We actually have mechanisms for setting aside funds for capital maintenance, but we're working on getting better at lining up what those future projects are and making sure that we're setting money aside as we go, so when the commitment hits to replace a roof, we have the money set aside for that project.
When you set aside a project money, do you set aside a contingency? Because we know if you set it, say in 16 for a project we're going to do in 18, we know how much more expensive it's going to be, so are we setting it aside with a contingency fund that if the... Okay, you're shaking your head?
Yes, that's a great point. If we're setting aside money now for a future project, we've also got to get better at projecting what the future cost of that project is going to be. As you've seen through our execution of the 2K projects, that's hard. That's hard to do, especially when the economy's chugging along. But it's a great point, and as we refine our efforts here, we need to make sure that we're doing that. If we're setting money aside, it's for the future cost of that project, not for what it costs today. Additionally, we've, with the help of our friends at CH2M, we are continually adopting better methods of project management, and the key is to make those a part of every project that we manage going forward. We've instituted concepts such as phases and gates for our 2K projects. Our goal is to adopt those same project management principles to all projects that we manage throughout the organization. So with that background information, these are the CIP projects that are proposed for funding in 2017 and beyond. RTD stationary enhancements, again, the diamond means it's an existing commitment. The star is a council priority identified back in January. 112th Avenue from Chambers to Tower, although not previously explicitly identified as a priority, it's been coming up a great deal recently from residents in the area, and we know it's been weighing on council's mind, so we're suggesting that we earmark some funds to further study how we can get that done. 120th and Highway 85 reevaluation, pavement management. We identified on a prior slide about $492,000 in what you might call past three dollars aimed at pavement management. Our entire recommendation for pavement management in 2017 is 1.9 million through a combination of road and bridge, which is that $492,000, and the remainder from transportation tax. Council has previously provided direction to us to get an additional warning tower built in the northern range. We have some RTD stationary improvements that we're obligated to do. We have previously identified a vehicle wash facility at Public Works as a priority. Just a quick note, the $182,000 will be an additional appropriation added to monies that were originally appropriated in 2015. Anybody remember offhand what the total cost of the project for the vehicle wash facility is? Maria, do you know that offhand? It's on the mic here, Maria. Here. Just under $400,000. So this $182,000 will be added to prior funds identified that are already in the CIP budget. Eighteenth Avenue widening, this would be monies to again, begin studying the nature of that project and I believe initiate the environmental process to make us eligible for other funding.
Yes, this will match a Dr. Cog grant that we've been in the queue for.
$90,000 towards concrete flatwork, sidewalk connectivity, the Brighton 104th Signal that is an obligation of ours to the potential, actually the actual settlement that we've worked through with Dave Hammer. Completing Tower Road T88 drainage, we discussed previously with city council, the benefits of expanding that project in Tower Road in cooperation with our development partners in that area. Buffalo Run, the equipment replacement, completion of the Sand Creek NRDS settlement work, general park improvements, which really falls in the category of capital maintenance, allows us to continually maintain equipment in our parks. Adams 14 ball field improvements that's being done in cooperation with the Adams 14 School District. I mentioned previously, a more detailed assessment of our needs in terms of competitive fields in the northern part of the city, and this additional $100,000 that it's my suggestion we not budget at the time the budget's adopted, but be prepared to reappropriate money later in 2017 when we have a better idea what the nature of that project will be. This is how the funding lays out for the entire capital improvement program for 2017. With all of that, again, it's our pleasure to recommend a budget to you. It's an important job. We take it very seriously. We're tremendously grateful to have such a talented collection of staff to help us do this process on an annual basis. We do propose, are proposing a balanced budget to council. Our goal is to maintain levels of services. This budget does not propose reducing service levels anywhere throughout the organization. We want to budget conservatively and make sure we're positioning ourselves to weather changes in the local and world economy around us. As we've mentioned, we want to take care of our existing facilities. We want to be able to attract and retain a high-quality workforce, which is a challenge in a bursting economy. It's a goal of ours to continue to be competitive. We want to continuously review our policies and procedures to assure future fiscal sustainability. It's been a big emphasis of ours to do things in a sustainable way as opposed to cobbling together a budget on an annual basis. We want to do things that can be sustainable long-term. We also want to be able to position the city to take advantage of opportunities and continually look for opportunities to improve how we go about doing the work that we do. That's a mouthful, largely information that was previously presented to council. Although I was not here on August 8th, city council did request a fair amount of additional information. I've got so much paper here. Let me find my list. We, can we put up on the screen the agenda for the budget retreat? It'll have a listing of the additional information items that you requested of us last week. Here it is. We have them listed on the agenda as A through H. We attempted to list them in order of their impact on the budget. Some of the items that you requested last week don't impact the budget, and although we could discuss those tonight, our suggestion would be you allow us to bring those back to you in a study session format and that you focus tonight on things you need to discuss to give us direction on expenditures in the budget. to give us direction on expenditures in the budget. I'm not sure if you can see that, but the things on this list is a cost breakout of table sponsorships that's listed in the legislative budget, council compensation. We presented some information several weeks back, and we've listed it again in tonight's packet. We think it's a good idea for council to discuss that, such that if you wish to make any changes, we can incorporate it into the 2017 budget. Likewise, the Quality Community Foundation funding options. We've laid out some in this additional information section, such that if you wish to increase funding, that would be important information for us to know tonight. Buffalo Run golf course items that were brought up by Mr. Douglas. They're fairly small dollar items. You could discuss them tonight. You don't have to discuss those things tonight. I think a number of those things we can address without specifically including funding for them in the budget. Fees, charges, operations, maintenance, including the outdoor pool. Fees and charges is quite a big area of discussion, and we included in the packet a process for council to have a more robust discussion of fees and charges wrapped around a philosophy of what you would like to accomplish with fees and charges for the various services and programs within the city. It would be my suggestion that you don't try to tackle that tonight as part of the budget process. Allow us to take you through a process to have a broader discussion and in part make this a focus of your planning retreat this coming January, and then we can figure out the impact of that discussion on the budget. Channel 8, there's some additional steps laid out in the budget. No additional funding at this time is needed in the budget, so there's no discussion you need to have tonight to further that. The recycling center, we have some additional information in the packet, and we don't recommend creating any additional recycling center at this time. And KIPCCAC engagement, again, would be a good subject for a study session. It isn't a budget item necessarily, so it's not necessary to discuss that and give us direction tonight. So with that, where would you like to go with the additional information that we provided in the packet? It probably is more efficient if council sort of picks and chooses which items you want to discuss further instead of necessarily going through all of the information that's in the packet.
Are there any particular items that the council wishes to go over right now? Councilwoman Carson?
My eyesight is not the greatest, but I know the recycling piece on there, what does that say again? Is that pertaining to...I know that I had brought up yard waste and maybe at least more dates available, if not a ongoing place. Is that falling under there or not?
It does. We've covered both additional recycling drop-off locations in this section of additional information, along with the possibility of doing composting at locations throughout the city. If that's something that council would like us to walk through, we're happy to pull that portion of the slides up and walk through it. Is that something you'd like us to do?
Would you like that?
I would. Thank you.
Who's our expert on those items? That's a way of saying I'm not the expert. Roger, why don't you start walking through the information, and Maria can add additional detail.
So the analysis, as Mr. McBroom mentioned, covers both topics of the recycling itself and also the yard waste, green waste. The recycling program currently is provided at no cost to residents for pickup. We used to operate a recycling center, a drop-off center, which was at that old service station on Highway 2, and there were a number of problems encountered with that site. People would drop off not only recycling, but also trash. And so there was furniture that would get dumped there, there was regular garbage that was dumped there, and we had a lot of problems with it. So the recommendation from staff is to not go back to that type of a facility because residential have the opportunity for recycling. Now, in terms of the compostable materials, that is something that staff has looked at, and I would defer to Maria at that point in terms of what that would look like.
Yes, so one of the items that we're investigating is the idea, there's a new business that opened on the west side of I-76, kind of behind the La Quinta over there. It's called, now I forget, A1 Organics, I think it's called. And so it's located within the city, and we talked with them about a similar program to what Denver does, is where you could get a voucher from the city. We could then determine how many we want to give each household per year, and then they would take the voucher over to A1 Organics with their load of material and be able to drop that off. So we pay for it, but they essentially manage the program for us. That's about, we've had two meetings with them, that's about all we've done, so we have not requested costs on that. But typically, you know, if you brought a load over there yourself of green waste material, it would probably cost anywhere between $10 and $25 for a typical truckload. So we think that's within the realm of possibility. I think the hardest part would be is determining how many of those vouchers might get used in any given year, so how can we put a kind of a dollar amount around what our potential cost would be.
Additionally, by way of reminder, residents are able to use one of your five free large item pickups for yard waste, and we do offer the two free drop-off opportunities during the course of the year. But I understand compost would be a different concept, something we haven't done before.
Yeah, and just, so we have investigated a little bit too onsite composting. Essentially, if we were to provide a third can for just compost material to each resident, you can imagine it's probably about another third in terms of picking up of what our contract costs right now, which is just under $2 million. So just for a rough estimate, if they were to pick up a third can, that would be designated for composting, similar to the recycling.
I would also like, is that on, to continue maybe really looking into that we had our own facility for tree branches and such, so that residents could bring those in and that we would, is it the word, you chip them to get mulch? And then either the city could use that mulch or citizens could pick it up. I know it's done a little different in various cities, but you know, you never know when those storms are going to hit, and I know residents were impacted greatly with, I mean, a lot of really large branches had broke, and you know, my yard, I can tell you, does not fit in that can, whether it's a cleanup day or you're just mowing with trimming. It just doesn't work. And so I know I've had a lot of residents say that even in the smaller lots, that it's very difficult to do your recycling, your trash, and have to get your yard waste also in there. But I would like to see us open something like that as a service to our residents. And it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, it's just something I'd like to do more research on it. If we had a location, what would that look like? And manpower is in equipment, what would it take?
Councilwoman Carson's suggestion is that council direct us to study that further and bring back a more specific proposal or options for how we could do that and what it would cost? Do I, am I understanding you?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Carson and I have the same concerns, and I know we've talked about this a little bit briefly. I think there are really a couple of things. One is the two drop-off events that we've had, I personally wasn't able to attend either due to, you know, a conflict, and I think the challenge of having fixed date, you know, one day during this window, drop it off, is it radically narrows the number of people that can participate. I'd like to explore a window, and maybe it's a seasonal window, right, during the spring season or some range of the year where we create an ability to drop off select material, right? And I think primarily it's, you know, tree trimmings, you know, those kinds of yard waste items. I know there are pros and cons to, you know, creating mulch out of that and reusing it and, you know, the potential to distribute disease, so those are legitimate concerns, I understand. But I would think that if we could enable our community to do that and not have to deal with an additional container and paid pickup, then the ability for us to then work with another partner to pick that material up or for us to get those material to A1 Organics or something where we basically become a collection location, use some of our existing facility at the MSC or something where folks can drop those things off and then figure out how we get those somewhere else. I mean, there are folks that are doing biomass for energy production or otherwise, and I've got to think that there's some partner, you know, in the supply chain that we could find a way to get those materials to. And I, we've looked at this before, I can't remember the last time I did research on this, to see what some of the other communities are doing. I know we're not large enough to go to the extent that some communities are at, but when you look at, you know, a typical lot, let's just use the Northern Range as an example, not Councilwoman Carson's yard, because she's got a bigger yard than mine, but the challenge of when you have those kinds of materials to get rid of, and it's not one of the yard waste days, the only place to go is to spend $70 on a truckload at the dump or drive clear across the west side of town. There's a facility in Golden that you can take material to. We don't have anywhere to go, and, you know, you have to, I believe, show proof of residence to use some of the drop-off facilities in Aurora or some of the other locations. And so what happens is we create, at the same time, we have neighbors and residents who are trying to take care of their property, we also contribute to those mysterious piles of rubbish that show up off of 88th and Buckley or elsewhere. And so I've got to think that if we can find a way to make that happen and have folks know that that's an available resource, I think it would have a huge impact. And I think there's, so it's probably not a very black and white conversation. I think there are a number of little things that we should explore. The question of yard waste continues to come up, and I know, you know, on one hand, this is about, you know, what are our individual tastes and practices in terms of yard care and how frequently do we do it? And do we use a mulching mower? Do we bag it? You know, what do we do? And what does that translate into putting it in a trash can? You can't necessarily institute a composting program unless you have enough interest to make it financially viable, you know, for the contract, and then the question is how do you fund that? And so to me, the only way that you could fund that would be an add-on opt-in pay-for service. I don't think we could do that as a provided service, just given our history of conversations in terms of waste and the fact that we're still paying for these services when a number of other communities are looking at ways to do pay-go and pay-through, whatever you want to call it. There's got to be some reasonable split of how we do that. And so I guess the bottom line is, I think we need to have a really good conversation and find a way to get input from our community. I would love to say our next Telephone Town Hall, we tease some of these. I know we did that before, but I also don't know that that's going to get us a ton of feedback, so I don't know what other avenues we can use to maybe get that idea out there. Maybe we do try some of the survey-type tools we did early in the 2K program and do some sporadic surveying. It's certainly a hot-button topic when it comes up. You can see the conversations on social media, folks trying to figure out what to do with things. The large item pickups, I've heard, you know, and I don't have proof that this is true, but I've heard folks suggest that because they had four things on the curb, those were four, those Canada's four pickups for their large item pickup as opposed to one visit to the curb with your items. So there's some clarification I think that we need in terms of what that means. You know, if I bundled four bundles of yard waste, right, branches, would that count if they came out versus I call you four times to come out and pick up a pile of yard waste? And then finally, I think because we have a relationship with waste management for our recycling and trash provider, I would like to see if we can explore any sort of a discounting or preferred pricing for their Bagster product. I don't know if folks are familiar with that. If you go to your Ace Hardware or your Home Depot, you can get, it's kind of like an IKEA bag product, is what it feels like. It's a green folded-up bag. It comes in a package about like so. You pay a fixed rate for that at the hardware store. You come home and fill it to your leisure, up to 3,000 pounds, and then you call and have them pick it up. And we used it recently, and, you know, they called, or did on the line, said, scheduled our pickup on a Saturday and asked for Monday, and by gosh, they were there on Monday morning and picked it up. But you pay for the bag, and then you pay another fee for the pickup, which was, you know, over 100 bucks. From a convenience perspective, if you don't have a pickup truck, right, if you have a truck, you could go and load your truck overtime and spend $70 to go to the dump and risk a flat driving up, you know, the hill. Or you can have this item in your driveway that you fill in. And so it would be interesting, as part of our large item pickup program, if we could find a way to maybe puzzle-piece this Bagster product in there so that now you have a vehicle that says, "I need to do a substantial yard cleanup. I will go buy my Bagster at full price, but because I'm a Commerce City resident, maybe I get preferred pricing on that pickup." So maybe instead of $120, it's, you know, maybe it's a third less or half that price, whatever we could negotiate. That, to me, might be a really interesting way to try and solve for that drop-off, because even if we set up drop-off at the MSC, for example, not every member of the community is going to have the ability to get things somewhere like the MSC to drop them off. So I'm just trying to think of how we look at different avenues that we could kind of puzzle-piece together. So anyway, does that kind of fit? So...
Without, if other council members have comments, by all means weigh in. That sounds like it would need to be some additional work that we would do and then bring back to you. We wouldn't have that information enough time to include it in the budget document, but it's something we can discuss fall, spring, and either do it as a reappropriation next year if council arrives at a preferred option, or certainly include it as part of the 2018 budget too, so.
Just one last comment. I think, and that makes total sense, I think the key would, to me, would be to figure something out to the extent we can before next growing season, right? So that we are able to announce this program in, you know, the late winter, early spring so that folks can plan around it and we can line things up, so.
So that'd be more of a fall timeline, early next year at the latest, that we could have something.
And again, that's Councilwoman Carson and I, I don't know if the rest of council is supportive of that kind of urgency around it. I just hate to see it kicked too much further down the road.
No, I would agree with you, Jason. I've seen a lot of my neighbors put out bundles of limbs and branches, and they sit on the curb, they don't get picked up, and they wonder why they don't get picked up. I think we need to, number one, work a little more on education for our community as how the large item pickups work, because people are getting frustrated. And then you have springs like we had the last two springs where we have a lot of trees that are dying because of late frosts and things of that nature. People just don't know where to get rid of them. Now, before I get off this topic, I know Mr. Douglas has something he wants to talk about on recycling, but I want any other comments concerning this green waste before I get off the topic. So did you have a green waste topic or recycling?
It's all about the same.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Douglas.
I had brought this issue up on June 27th, and I had sent out to everyone, Jason, me to comment on it, about what the city of Broomfield's doing. And they have their MSC, they have a certain section in their city, just similar what we have over here at the MSC Center in the back. They have these stalls that have aggregate in on the aggregate rock, whatever it is, that we could stage bringing just tree branches. We are a very mature city now, down here in the south and north. We have very mature trees, and you'd be trimming all the time. We have an ordinance as far as trimming the trees, has to be at least 10 feet high in the sidewalk. There's a lot of trees in the neighborhood that are not trimmed, but those folks are reluctant to trim because they have no place to take it or they have to be trimmed down. to trim because they have no place to, to take it, or they have to be trimmed down when the waste management comes in. So, uh, the reason why I sent that out, and I sent out to everyone, and then I had sent it out to Brian and other staff members, is to look into this before we got to this point, and we didn't do that. So I'm trying to, try to bring things, so we can talk about it, so when we get to this point, uh, we thought things through. And, you know, um, we have the facility, and it just could be started maybe on a Wednesday, or, or, like Broomfield, they used to have theirs twenty-four, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, they went to Saturday from eight to five and then Wednesdays. Um, we could, I mean, I'm not going to tell you what we can do. I mean, that's, hand it off to you guys, but let's look at, um, what we can do with our facilities before we push it to waste management and put more on our citizens when just simplify it, starting out with the simple program, just dropping off, um, tr- uh, tree branches and, and all that, um, and, and see where it goes. But I think we need to do something this year and not wait till next year, because we had a spring, we had a couple, we had one date and then we increased it, I'm sorry, last year, we had two dates. Well, the weather, the weather did not cooperate. Mother Nature said, no, I'm going to keep it warm. And we, when we had that time for the, the, the green waste, um, never any people showed up because of the weather. And then we did another one. In this spring, we just did one, and I thought maybe we could do additional one, which we didn't, but we had a lot of people who had leftover branches and all, that he did not get, they did not get to participate in the program. Um, so I, I think it's on us as a city to try to do something before the end of this year and not wait till springtime, because there's a lot of folks who had need to do some cleanup.
Just a quick note, uh, Mr. Douglas mentioned that he brought the item up back in June. Mr. Douglas and I have, have talked about this. There are times when council members bring up items during administrative council business. We're not always clear if we're being given direction or if it's just an information item being passed along. So I think that's, that's certainly part on us, that if we're not clear, uh, the council, is council giving us direction to take a particular action? I, I need to prompt that. Uh, but also, if it's your desire to give us that direction, it's always helpful to do it as a motion, so it's clear for the record, and it's harder for us to misunderstand uh, what it is that council's asking us to do. And my guess is, without looking back to the information, this may be one of those that fell into that category. Uh, it was brought up at the meeting, but not clear what, what we're supposed to do in terms of an action item, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can give you clear direction to that.
That'd be very helpful.
Point of clarification, staff did look at that. The cities that are listed provide various types of either drop-off or recycling type of service, but the cities listed also do not provide free trash pickup. They're not in that business. And so, as an alternative to private haulers, these cities have undertaken this, whereas Commerce City provides free refuse pickup for residential properties. And so, uh, what we looked at is, A, a recycling drop-off, and our recommendation still is not to get back into that business. B, we looked at yard waste, compostable type of materials, and there are some options. And certainly, whatever council directs us to do, we would be happy to follow up on that and, and figure out a solution, so.
Thanks. I know, uh, Mr. Teeter, your, your comments are on, again, yard waste.
Yes, I'd like to go back to what Maria said earlier. I frequent, uh, Pioneer Center gravel quite a little bit, and there's a, a large pile of limbs there that they open up to the public, um, and then they later on recycle that stuff, grind it up and recycle it and sell it. That lot, that area is totally full all the time, and they have to put signs out to say, no more limbs, no more limbs. Well, um, what Maria was saying there, let somebody else manage it for us. It'll be the same way if we do it at our facilities over there. People will be bringing limbs constantly. I'd like to also go back and, um, take a look at that place over there and see what the cost could be and see what we could work out to, for the residents to take it in there for a fee and do an educational piece, so that our residents do know where this place is at, that it is available, because I'm sure if, um, they would just as soon take the stuff over there, take it to a landfill if they have the ability to do that. And if we can get, if, if we can get some kind of a voucher for them, I know people would probably use that. And this way, somebody else is managing our problem and we're not having to manage it. And I'd also like to see if we can find out, if we can get, um, the mulch ourselves, go pick the mulch up for our people, if that's, if they want to go, uh, pick up mulch over there, if that would be a, a place for them to go to.
All right, uh, one more, Mr. Bullock.
I, um, I know that every year after Christmas, we have a Christmas tree pickup in, um, Wrexon a lot, and I think there's, um, another spot. What do we do with those Christmas trees after they're picked up?
I would need to confirm, Renee, but our perks department, um, disposes of those. I believe we chip, we would, we chip them before we just, but I, I would need to follow up and get you exactly what we do with it. I'm happy to provide.
But we do have a chipper.
We have a small chipper.
Okay.
All right, anybody else on yard waste before I try to get us moving? Mr. McBrough?
Just to make sure I understand the direction you'd like us to take, it does sound as if it's the consensus of council to explore some options for compost slash yard waste. I'm not sure I heard any consensus of council to look at this idea of additional recycling drop-off in addition to the curb side. Is that, uh, I, I don't recall now what the, what the Broomfield setup is, but I understood it to be some sort of recycling drop-off center. So I see that as different than the compost slash yard waste. I wanted to make sure I understand council's direction on that item.
I'm hearing the same thing. More about yard waste than additional recycling, but I'll leave it up to the council to make a motion to give direction to staff.
Just a, just a quick clarification. Since it's a study session, I don't think you can actually take actions. We'll just have to base it on sort of a consensus.
But I'm going to try and summarize, so we can get head nods. And my suggestion is that we ask for a future study session to discuss yard waste slash limbs, uh, in the form of drop-off location and/or partnerships with, uh, in community or close to community partners like, uh, A1 Organics. Explore chipping, self-chipping and self-collection. And, uh, what am I missing?
I think you got it.
And the large item pickup.
Additional education about the large item pickup.
And I think the education we had in here, yeah, is part of the ongoing, and we just had a postcard go out. So, continuing that, is that?
And in regards to the large item pickup, if you have four items out there on one day, does that count as four different pickups? Okay, 'cause that has happened.
So we have a list on the website that, what constitutes a large item pickup? So it could be, um, a dresser or a large piece of furniture, like a table and four chairs would count as one large item pickup. A couch and a love seat, one large item pickup. If you have multiple of those things, they, they'll pick up two large item pickups at the same time, but they need to know that, so that they have a big enough truck come. So it, it's listed some typical examples, so it's more of about a volume. So four individual items, like one, you know, like a reasonable amount of trash, I think we designate, I believe it's four piles of limbs that are tied, would constitute one large item pickup. So you can then, when you call, because you have to call the schedule, you need to tell them how many of those large item pickups you have, or your items. So they'll talk you through that.
Okay, 'cause, uh, a love seat and a couch was counted as two items. And so, um, I just, I guess maybe it was a breakdown of communication. Maybe the person just said, I've got furniture out there, and they didn't specify that it was a love seat and a couch.
Yeah, so that, that, we, we will certainly, uh, work back through waste management, because they have their, they've trained their staff to deal specifically with the large item pickups, and we might just need to remind them about what those general parameters are.
You know, the hardest thing to get picked up is a trash can. If you have a trash can out there that you need to get picked up, it doesn't get picked up ever, unless you're just standing out there on the day when they show up.
Or put it in the new can, and then hopefully it'll go.
Same size.
All right, um, so let's get back to, to the organic piece. Um, is the council okay with having the staff look at that for a future study session item? If not, say no. All right. Um, so that gives you some direction to, to get a study session lined out for dealing with all of the above that was listed, um, with organics.
There are some, uh, again, going back to this list of additional items, there are some on the list that if council wished to pursue them, would impact the budget. So further direction from council on those in particular would be useful. Uh, council compensation, quality community foundation would really be the two key ones on that list that would impact the budget itself.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, uh, in, in speaking about the quality community foundation, Jason brought it up, um, two or three weeks ago about, um, increasing their funds. And I would, uh, see if council would be, uh, with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars now, and I was just thinking, um, if because of it, if we could raise that within the budget with council's approval and everything to a hundred and fifty next year, and then put an index in where it continuously, continuously rises, um, on the same index, I should say, okay, it's there. Okay, is our, um, salary, 'cause we are on the, um, the COLA, and, but you know, sometimes that goes down, too. I have been there when it went down. So, but it's very rare it goes down. In all the years I've been on council, it's only gone down one time. And, um, so, um, but that would be with, if, uh, council has any other suggestions, uh, I just thought a hundred and fifty from what we're doing. We've been at a hundred and twenty for how many years now?
When did we drop it from? Do you remember?
Two hundred plus.
Can, can we just have staff walk through the slides?
Yeah, sure.
I might need a clicker. All right. So we included in the presentation what their purpose was, and this comes from their bylaws and their website. Um, again, primarily post-secondary education, youth recreational program scholarships, and the grant piece to nonprofits. So there's three pieces of, of work that they do. Uh, the scholarships are a four thousand dollar scholarship historically to one or two individuals over a two-year period. You can see between 2013 and 2016, the number of scholarships they authorized, and the primary funding source for that is the golf tournament. So you can see what the net proceeds from the golf tournament have been the last two years as well. The nonprofit grants, again, a hundred and twenty thousand annually. 2016, you awarded twenty-five recipients. You did have thirty individuals apply, and the total of all of those requests was nearly two hundred thousand dollars. And then in terms of recreation scholarships, we, the foundation funded, um, almost fourteen hundred dollars to fifty-two individuals in 2015. And again, that, those scholarships are funded through the wine and beer tasting. So some of the options we proposed is you could fund the educational scholarships, the nonprofit grant funds, the recreation scholarships, or a combination of those options. For example, some thoughts to consider, you could fund one of those educational scholarships at four thousand dollars every year, and then ask the QCF to, you know, fund a second one as well. You could also, um, try to get over the course of time, the grant money up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which could do a twenty thousand dollar a year increase over a certain amount of time, or you could get there faster by doubling that. And then certainly, you could provide a thousand dollars annually for recreation scholarships, should you choose. So those were just some of the ideas we had, but certainly, there's a myriad of options in between there, depending on how you'd like to proceed.
Jason? And thanks to Renee for bringing this up, because I, this is definitely one we wanted to talk about. Um, I, I like the idea of growing our contributions to this, and I think it's really good to remind us of the three facets of, of the foundation. I guess what was coming to my mind as we were going through this is thinking about this sort of matching grant concept, where we may budget, let's say, four thousand dollars for educational and maybe a thousand for recreational, um, but we treat that as a match to whatever the foundation raises through each of the events that they use to drive that. The, the idea being that it's an accelerator to their efforts and hopefully incentivizes them to, you know, be more aggressive, because we're going to match up to a certain amount. But either way, it helps us have a bigger impact. I think the fact that they only raised what they did for, uh, for golf, for the school scholarships this last year is, is a concern. So it may make more sense to simply meet the need on that scholarship, so that the need is there. But I'd like to see us explore getting to a place where we, uh, you know, we're trying to match them. In terms of the nonprofit grants, I think it's as simple as Renee said. I think we have to take a, a look at where we start and come up with some sort of an increase for year one, and then some reasonable increase over time, uh, not like our, uh, water impact fee, uh, that just scales indefinitely. Um, but some, some form of an escalator that helps us grow that over time, um, within reason. I don't know, thoughts?
Anyone else? Jaden?
I was looking, and I can't find it. I really would like to look at increasing that and to really be committed to stopping those last-minute requests that come in front of us, um, whether it's the flu shots. I mean, there's just been numerous ones that we have funded. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure it would, what the dollar amount would be if we said it all has to be channeled through there. Um, rather, I, I know you gave us that information of what we had spent on that. I don't know if anybody remembers.
I don't know. You, there were almost two hundred thousand dollars in requests last year, so it's still a competitive grant process. So the question would be if there were ancillary items, I'm looking at Lisa, that you funded in, in between.
What do we do for, um, I know it was golf sponsorships to tournaments. Um, like I said, I, I don't remember if the flu shots this year came through.
They did.
They did, okay. Um, but, you know, I mean, if we could increase that, and then, like I said, strictly stick to that, that it has to go through that process.
We've done a couple of things. Those things that are one-off requests for two or three years in a row, we've been suggesting that they be included in your budget, and you just consider funding them as a budgeted item. After a few years of, uh, just identifying some funds and paying for it, that we included in the budget. We have some of those recommended in this year's budget, uh, and then we have some additional ones that we think you should consider for this year, because you've funded them the last few years. Uh, in some cases, we do refer those people to the QCF after one year of funding them from a citizen communication request. In other cases, if it's in a, if it's an event, we're suggesting you, you consider adding it to your budget. And we've, we can review those with you when you're ready, but maybe you want to talk through the QCF item first, and then we can suggest to you those things that you've been participating in the last few years that you may want to just go ahead and add to your budget.
I mean, if it's possible, I would like to see all of those happen, um, an increase to the QCF budget. Um, and then the scholarship and the... And then the scholarship and the recreational scholarship as a match to their fundraising. If I served on that committee, that would, that would be a really nice thing to be able to go out and say, if we can raise 4,000, we can get a $4,000 match. That's pretty good, so.
Well, to that end, if you wish to do all three of those, but look at a $20,000 a year increase for the next few years, that's only a $25,000 impact on the budget, which you can certainly afford to do.
Yeah, so the 240 is just assuming that you wanted to double it over time, so.
Right.
I wasn't looking at 240, I was looking at the 20,000 increase, I'm sorry.
So if you had a 25,000 to the QCF allocation next year, it would be the 120 plus another four, for one scholarship, $1,000 for the recreational scholarships, and a $20,000 bump to the 120. Does that make sense? So you go to 140 plus fund those other two items.
Just a thought on the ad hoc requests and maybe how to deal with that and put, kind of, look back at what we've done to kind of give control to the QCF on granting. What about as we grow this, maybe there's a $5,000 number that is held back. They don't, they're not given those dollars as part of the grant pool per se, but they hold those back so that as requests come through, we defer right there to the QCF and say, you know, our grants are facilitated by our quality community foundation, please reach out to them and budget them some reserve each year that they could use to deal with ad hoc requests. And that way, we're really driving it back to them, it builds the relationship for the subsequent grant cycle, and rather than having this massive once-a-year grant review, there may be some that come through ad hoc. And I don't know, maybe one of the things we talked about with them is, you know, I don't know what the sweet spot is on what they do sort of in the annual, or maybe it's a twice a year. I don't know what makes sense. I'm just thinking of, how do we get out of that pickle of, you know, from the dais authorizing or asking staff to figure this out? I'd rather have the budget predictability and then let them figure it out.
But would it come back to us, you know, every year they come back and give us a sheet before they hand out grants, and we look, we don't get no say-so, but we get to look and see where they're giving it to, you know, because of the...
I would expect the same kind of record-keeping and report back as under that program. I mean, the same transparency, and again, we're just brainstorming here, but I don't know.
And on the $4,000 for educational scholarship, we're calling it a match, but what if they don't have, excuse me, a good year and they don't have the $4,000, do we hold back on that year?
You could certainly call it a match or simply agree to fund one scholarship a year by increasing what you give them by $4,000. The match was just a suggestion if you wish to use upping your allocation as a bit of a lever to encourage additional fundraising from the foundation.
Steve?
Sorry about that. There's a couple that were past meetings we had on non-city agency grant history. Back in 2005, we budgeted for 250,000, and then for 2006, '07, '08, and '09, I'm sorry, 2006, '07, '08, and '09 was 300,000 that was budgeted in those times. And the higher suit quest was 1,271,000, and out of that, only 261 was awarded. And that's, you know, as far as your growth, we're maybe 15,000 different in population. But we do have a lot of agencies, and then we look at what was awarded 2015 versus '16, there was quite a few recipients who didn't get it because they're outside of our city. And then the request for the amount was a lot different for 2015 to '16 as well. It seemed like the requests were higher, but we only awarded 5,000 instead of up to 10,000, so. I say with the increase, I would like to see an increase as well, but really gearing towards the nonprofits that serve our citizens and not so much outside. I know when, just like we have projects, when that dollar amount goes up for nonprofit grants, we started having a list of clients, a lot of individuals who want to put applications in who are outside of our city walls. So I think that's another criteria too, is making sure that these are, these nonprofit grants are for our community and not outside, because it's really hard, it's hard to turn them away, but then again, we have so much need here that we need to make sure this program works and fits for our city.
I totally agree with Steve, but there's a qualifier on that. A lot of the agencies that do business outside our city do business within inside our city too. Their offices aren't located within the city limits, but a lot of their money goes to people in our city. So when they, I don't want to put a rock-hard qualification of agencies within our city and then all of a sudden, we're depriving agencies that work within our school district and everything and school district 27J, because they aren't physically located in Commerce City, they aren't being addressed. So when we put that kind of qualification, let's make sure we say that they are actively working in, uh-huh, yes, just what Jason showed me.
Steve, the document you sent out already...
No, they did. I'm just talking about like...
I think, I think just for bringing this back down, this is a conversation we've had with the QCF about tightening up those grant guidelines, and we've given them controls, and the presentation you sent us includes the criteria for these great recipients.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just, this is just for a public out there since we're being on TV, that's, I mean, we have all the information in front of us, but I'm not saying that like Rappel House, we benefit from their agency here in Commerce City and also other cities in our region. I was not specifically talking about Rappel House or any other kind of agency that are, that cross sector, those grants. I'm just talking about someone outside our city like Littleton applying for a grant and then the grant definitely goes directly to Littleton. What we have now through the QCF is great, this is just, you know, putting it out there like I said, because we're on channel eight right now and want people to understand, you know, how this, these non-agency grants work.
I think the intent of it was that the services provided be provided to this community, regardless if it's an outside agency, as long as they're providing that service to our residents, and that's how it was originally designed. And the reason, when you bring it up about it being 300,000 at one time, back early on, when the council was doing the QCF, before we had a board, we were doing what they call a large grant item, was for individual one-time projects within our community, and the council has changed that over time to bring it down to where it is today. We went through a downturn in the economy and we still haven't fully recovered, but we have been building the QCF up over time. And I do agree that it's time that we add some more money into the QCF for those services, but I am agreeable, Steve, to the services need to be provided to this community for the grants that are given, not necessarily that it has to be with an organization within the city, as long as the services are provided and the benefit is to the residents of the city. And hopefully that helps clear some of that up. Is there any more discussion on the QCF?
Well, I think we have to give some clearer guidance to staff.
If we can go back to the options, is there some consensus?
So without getting into the knit and grid of exactly where the dollars go, can we agree to do what the mayor suggested, which is come up with whatever the increase is to allow us to contribute up to $4,000 for the educational scholarships, up to 1,000 for recreational, and get us up to the new foundation level for our nonprofit grant number?
And as a clarifier on when it comes to the nonprofit grants, and I see you have the 240 total up there, which would be doubling, I would say, I am comfortable saying, go with the $20,000 increase this year, but I think each year we need to have that brought before us and not have it be an automatic 20,000 every year so that it doesn't get out of hand like our, the water resource fee has gotten out of hand. I want to make sure that the council can consider an additional increase annually without it being an automatic trigger. So I'm acceptable to a $20,000 increase and doing the 4,000 and the 1,000 annually, and that would be my recommendation to the council if they are comfortable doing that at this time.
Can we also get a review of that scholarship, the amount of money that was raised compared to what we funded?
Absolutely.
If I could ask a clarifying question, so what I'm, I saw a lot of heads nodding, increase the QCF allocation from 120 to 145,000, 4,000 of it for a scholarship, 1,000 of it for recreational scholarships, and an additional 20,000 for nonprofit grants.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
One additional question, there was some discussion about upping their allocation and asking them to keep some of it in reserve for ad hoc grants that might come up outside of the grant cycle, is that something you would like to go along with this $20,000 increase?
I would like to see something for those ad hocks because if people walk into the council meeting and they go, look, we didn't get into your grant cycle, we didn't know about it, and we're here to ask the council to do $2,000 for flu shots like JD said. That poses a problem because we're constantly, and every time it happens, whether we fund them or not, I always try to direct them back to the QCF. But if the QCF has, holds a pool of money like Jason was talking about and can consider those as they, as they come before us, instead of us funding it, we can circle them back to the QCF for the QCF to consider it because they have it allotted 100% of the funds. And I'm perfectly happy with that.
But they've got to know that if somebody comes and needs an ad hoc request, you know, don't tell them, wait till the funding cycle starts and everything. This is what we would call emergency money, ad hoc that they could do right on the spot. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think staff gets it. I saw head nods earlier. I would just ask that as part of this direction to staff, that they come back after having a conversation with the QCF to see if the concept makes sense, and maybe the QCF can propose with staff's help, some rough guidelines on how this might work, how they might administer it, what they would do to report back to us or whatever. But that way, we can essentially put this where it belongs.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's a good option. Just quick chatting here on the side, when we think about some of those ad hoc things, if QCF and council is willing to set aside, I don't know, $5,000 or $6,000 of this 20, that would probably capture a lot of those ad hocks that come up.
I would think so.
Throughout the year. But we will, I think it's a good suggestion to explore with the board. Any additional grants they would provide would have to meet their already established criteria. You're not asking them to award grants that fall outside the criteria, but we can explore that with the, with the board.
I would like to, honestly, I like the idea of that reserve, and I would like to see this first 20,000 put into that reserve and let them decide whether they could continually give it out or whether that it would be given out mid-season, mid-quarter, whatever. And then what's not used can be rolled over to their next year's budget, but that they always carry somewhere around that 20,000, 15,000 in that reserve, because I think that would take a lot of pressure off of us as counselors with those requests that come. And I guess that it would be, I'm not even sure whether they could say whether the 20,000 was too much, because I'm not sure they're aware of when we get those requests. And if we've tracked that to see, you know, is 20,000 way over what we should carry in reserves, or would that pretty much cover us? But then if they had the ability to roll it over the following year, what was it used?
Well, I think with the, with the dollar amount identified, it solves our need tonight, and I like the idea of kind of interacting with the board a bit to see how we utilize that 20,000 portion of the 25 in furtherance of this notion of addressing ad hoc requests. I would imagine we can collect some additional information that we can share with them too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On a somewhat related note, when it comes to ad hoc requests that council receives throughout the year, we have included in the budget already two events that have come up more regularly, the Kids First Roast at $1,500, that's now, we're recommending that that now be included, it is one of your budgeted events. In addition to that, the Precious Child Dinner that happened earlier this year at 2,500. So the non-city agency grants portion of the legislative budget has been increased by $4,000 for those two events. We did find some additional events that you may want to consider adding into the budget in addition to those two. The ones that we identified, one is Sabour. If you were to increase your budget, we would suggest you do that by $600, which would be six tickets to that event. As we look back over the past few years, several of you have been pretty regular attendees to that event. The Metro Chamber Goat Roping Event, that's part of, part of the stock show. Council has participated in that the last few years. One team is $1,400. And then additionally, just this past year, council did participate in the CASA event where it was Roasted Judge for $1,000. So that one has only come up once. The other two, you've actually participated in the last three years, and so they're probably good candidates to add to your budget in addition to those other two that we mentioned. So again, we've included Kids First and Precious Child, we would suggest.
Brian, I thought we were going to get some more information about Precious Child, whether they still had a facility in one of our schools. And, I mean, because I know they have that one location that's way west, like in Broomfield, which would, it's open to anyone, my understanding, but it's quite the commute. But I would like to see the actual impact we have right here within the city.
So how many?
I think they were in one of the basements of a school at Adams 14.
We have the report.
We do have some additional information. The question is, how many Commerce City residents are benefiting from that organization?
Sure, so they do have, they're a direct partner with Adams City Middle School. They have the Precious Boutique located at the school. They served in 2015, the Precious Essentials Program at the Resource Center, 145 families, 145 adults, and 755 kids. They also served 188 Commerce City youth with their Fill a Backpack Program, 382 youth with Precious Gift, and then they have sports equipment and scholarships, 18 kids total. Long story short, if I would have read all the way down, 1,484 children and adults in 2015. In 2016, year-to-date, they're still working on it, but their like Fill a Backpack Program has already served 528 kids.
Okay, I was quite familiar with the backpack program, but yeah, those numbers are nice, that's, yeah, thank you.
Now, this is just my opinion because I don't know. It's not if, when Sean is elected commissioner, I don't know how many of us are going to be goat roping. And I mean, I honestly, okay, I, me and Andrew, Rick, and Sean did it last year. I can tell you, I might go watch them, but as far it's, I don't think, I don't know. Sean was our drum major for this because he, that, he knew that. I am not that goat ropey, so I don't know who wants, will we be doing? Please say that out loud, should we? Please say that out loud, should we, or are you going to do it again? Okay, are you going to do it again?
I went to just watch and somehow became a contestant, thank you mayor, I would like to go forward with what Mr. Bolak is saying and just approve that year after year, because I'm not sure, depending on who sits in these seats, that they really will want to, and not that it's not fun, it was fun.
Well, that's the question, then, would you like us to include it in the 17 budget, or do you want to wait and make that decision next year when the event, well, of course the event comes around right at the start of the year?
Yeah.
Let's wait and make it when it comes around, because you tweaked your back last year, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, with, yeah, and it's, it's, it's fun, if Andrew wants to do the goat roping part of it, we can do it, but I watched, those goats do not cooperate, you know?
That was a strong little goat there, he pulled back pretty good.
There's a little bit of cruelty involved.
Yes, there's a lot of cruelty.
So I'm, I'm sort of hearing a, a general feeling that let's not include goat roping in the budget, what about Saboor, and also, I am hearing support to leave Precious Child and Kids First, and those are already in the budget, Saboor, should we include it in the budget, $600 for six tickets as a budgeted event?
Yes.
And I think just for clarity, that is actually supporting the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and building those relationships throughout the state of Colorado, just so that we know that that's happening.
You are exactly right. Lisa's just clarifying for me, you did participate in the Roasted Judge Event through CASA, which she's indicating is really the same organization as Precious Child?
Is it Precious Child CASA?
Is Precious Child CASA?
No, no, Precious Child and CASA are two different organizations.
They are different organizations, so that's the question, you only participated in the Roasted Judge Event for the first time this year.
This was the first time they've had it.
Would you like to include that as a budgeted event next year, or do you want to make that decision again when the event rolls around next year?
Let's make it when the event rolls around, because we don't know who the judge is, it might be a judge that has nothing to do with Commerce City, last year was Judge Melanakis, and he actually, his, he was, he's done things, and he's worked with Judge Juarez and everything, and so I think, and plus it was CASA, you know, more, it's more CASA than it is roasting the judge.
Certainly, it's, the, the purpose is to raise money for CASA, certainly, we will not include the Roasted Judge Event or goat roping to the budget, we'll consider those as they come around, we will increase the budget by $600 for the Hispanic Chambers Saboor Event.
And Precious Child.
Precious Child is already in, we don't have to make any change, and so is.
Roast the, Kids First.
Kids First.
Okay, and up there it says the Blue Stem Event, and it's no longer called the Blue Stem Event, you have the flyer in front of you, that's the, the Moonlight Dinner is what the event is now called.
And that is a budgeted event, so there's no need to make any change to the budget for that, as I understand, I wasn't at the meeting on August 8th, but you'd asked for some additional information, just sort of verifying the method in which these organizations are managed, to know that the money that you're donating is not going to administration, but it's going to deliver programs, this is the information that we received from those organizations that we reached out to, we will continue trying to collect information, but it only impacts the budget if you wish to not attend these events, in which case we would take it out, but these things are all included in the budget as it's been recommended to you, so you don't have to do anything unless you wish to cross something off the list and reduce it, remove it from the budget, does that make sense?
Okay.
If I go back to our list of additional items that would have an impact on the budget, probably the one on the list that's most important, that would have the biggest impact on the budget, would be if council wishes to consider any adjustments to council compensation to include things like mileage reimbursements, we included some information in the packet, is that something council wishes to discuss, or is that not a, not an important item?
Well, I do have a question about what you distributed to us, it's the Section 2, Ordinance Number 1380, there was another ordinance that follows that, that.
It should be in 2011.
But it's not here, that took that away?
That was the ordinance that reduced the retirement benefit, is that what you're speaking of?
It didn't reduce it, it eliminated it.
It eliminated it, that is, that is correct.
It should be in 2010 or 2011, because it was your.
Somewhere between 9 and 11, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dominic was here.
We can absolutely confirm that, we didn't include it since it doesn't currently impact council compensation, so we included this information to kind of provide some background on how council compensation got to where it is currently, it, it started, its current iteration was initiated with Ordinance 1391 in 2001, which set it at that time at 800 for the mayor, 700 for council persons, and then it created this structure for adjusting it annually based on CPI, the information that was originally published in the packet was not correct, this is the corrected current salary information for the mayor and council persons, and what you see in the Commerce City line on this chart is the roll-up of this information of the monthly amounts, so this is how your current strictly on, on compensation pay compares to other jurisdictions around the metro area, and we included information about the jurisdictions as well to get some idea of how compensation might be related to the size of those cities.
How come our size is always wrong on these charts?
Well, the, the question comes up, which population figure do we list, and the most reliable population figures we had for the other communities was 2010 census, so we listed our community population as of 2010, so the salary information is current as of right now, but in order to compare their salaries, to make sure, or compare their populations in an apples-to-apples fashion, we just stuck with the 2010 populations of these communities, we did provide a handout tonight that has, is it updated information from what's here?
It just shows the details of the extra benefits.
It shows the details, but now it's.
It does provide some additional detail of the other benefits council members receive in the different jurisdictions, if you were truly looking at total compensation, you would consider all of that, this just summarizes the salary information, and then like we have with the other items, we did lay out some alternatives for you to consider, we'd be happy to talk through any of these, they're just suggestions to get your discussion started, and then there is a manner in which the changes would take effect based on the city's charter, so we wanted to make sure you were aware that if you made changes to council compensation, how would it impact you as individuals in terms of how they're required to take effect, so we're happy to go through any of that in more detail if you'd like.
So, thank you, city manager, I guess, first, it's two-part, one, there's some information in front of us as far as mileage and mileage that's being billed to the city per month, and I'm going to use myself as an example, we attend multiple fundraisers, and I'm going to call them fundraisers, because when you go to a golf tournament, or you go to a rotary meeting or something, you are actually building that quality community for a lifetime, and so you may, and I'm going to use this weekend as an example, there were three events on Saturday, and if you go to all three events, you know, it's sometimes challenging to figure out where you've been on that day, much less throughout the week, much less throughout the month, and so, looking at, and I'm using myself as an example, in 2013, I only had an average monthly mileage reimbursement of $22.36, and what I will allow, say some of that is toward, is because in some months you just, you can't get to it all, and then in 2014, it got to $23, and then 15, 12, 99, and now in 2016, the mileage, at least for myself, is $8.94, so in going to all of these events, I might as well drive throughout the city with my gas cap off and my wallet hanging out the window, because if you're driving from the northern range, I'm noticing, and I'm going to use Councilman Benson for 14, 15, and 16, he got zero for mileage, and when I look at JD Carson, she has $0 for 2012, 13, 14, 15, and 16, and so we don't do this job for the glamour, we, it's almost to me, it's like coaching, and you want to see your community do better and do well, and I know there were multiple meetings with the whole DIA deal, and how the 1A on DIA turned out, and 27.5% tax revenue sharing of anything that happens on DIA is huge in the future, and so there, there were two years of meetings that went on, and sometimes those meetings were twice a week, and when I look at that, it's two-part, and I could go into details on this, but maybe we could look at some kind of stipend just for mileage, because it is hard to track everywhere that you go, and then that's part one, and part two is the compensation for council in general, and so we did see that there are some compensation options that are there, and really where I'm looking down the road, and I'm actually kind of pushing it, is that if you say wanted to be the mayor of Commerce City, and someone told you, hey, you're going to go ahead and get $12,000 a year, or, that's very, very nominal, so the only way to really make that work, in my opinion, is you either A, have to be really wealthy, or B, you have to have a super-strong family foundation to be able to put in 50, 60, 70 hours a week, and I, you know, I see our mayor go to these multiple meetings, and so that's why I really wanted to evaluate what that looks like, and I would think that anybody, and I don't want to speak for the council, but goes to all of these events, or a majority of these events, and people always say, oh, well, you know, you're going to a golf tournament, well, it's really not a golf tournament, it's a fundraiser, and the way I look at it, after you buy your mulligans and you, you know, get in the raffle, and a majority of the time you never, ever, ever win, I always tell my wife, hey, I'm going to go lose 100 bucks again, here we go, right, and so if you look at the compensation, and you look at the mileage that you're putting in, and the time that you're putting in, it's, it's extremely nominal, so that's really where I think it's important to look at the options that are in front of us, along with what other cities are getting as a comparable city, and really, I want to see this community be the best that it can be with the mayor that it is, and I know that Sean's putting in multiple hours, and now he's just got into a car accident, and now he has to replace his car, and I mean, you're always risking all these things that are out there, and even, they reminded me, yeah, we went to the goat roping thing, and, you know, now you're paying your copay to go get realigned in your back for, you know, a month, so I think there's something just to, to take a look at, and it sounds self-serving, but I really don't feel that it is self-serving, because in this capacity that we're serving, I feel like it's volunteering, so.
I'm going to go ahead and speak, because I am term limited, and any increase wouldn't affect me, so, but I, but I think whoever is the next mayor of this city, that you should have or be more comparable or competitive with the other cities, our size, and when you look at Northland at $35,000, $17,000, you look at Brighton at $33,000, at $16,800, you look at those cities that are comparable, we are definitely much lower than anyone else based on our size, our population, I, I really think that needs to be fixed, I think it will help with your candidates for mayor in the future, for council members in the future, so you have the best quality of people within the community, and you, you can maybe get a whole different pool of, of folks that want to do the job, so that there is, is more interest, it's, it's not about me, because I won't be here to see the increase, but it's about the city going forward, since I started back in 99 as councilman at large, we've over-doubled our size and population, and I, I really think that it would be great to see the mayor, whoever that person may be, he or she in the future would get enough to be able to help survive, it's very, very tough with the time you put in, and with the family, and I'm not complaining, because I took this job on because I care about the community, and I wanted to do the job, and I knew what it paid, but I, but I think it would be helpful to encourage more activity, more offset for that time lost with your family, the extra mileage that you have to put into your vehicles, as Andrew said, I got in a wreck, but that's on me, that's, that's, that's part of that risk that I take, however, I think from a stipend perspective, and I brought it up years ago, even on the mileage reimbursement, the amount that the mayor does, the amount that the council members do, because it's, for the council members, it's turned into really a nightmare on keeping track of every mile, if there was a stipend, not an excessive stipend, but enough to offset those maintenance dollars and the fuel that, that you put just in city business, I think it makes the job a little more attractive to the rest of the community, but when most of the community finds out that you're making 10 or 11,000 a year for the work that you put in, most people are shocked, and the only reason I would bring it up is because I would not receive that, it would be the next person in line.
Just one, one quick clarification, if you did shift to a mileage allowance instead of a reimbursement, you can make that effective immediately, that's not subject to the provisions in the charter, and additionally, I don't know, I think we mentioned it up there, doing the mileage as a reimbursement is, requires a fair amount of time from you all and from staff, a monthly allowance might actually be easier to administer, which means cheaper to administer than reimbursing you for mileage, so, but the shifting to that, that could take effect immediately or whenever you wanted it to take effect.
And I think that would be a study session item for the council, to consider what, what other communities are doing from, from the standpoint of mileage, I haven't seen all the different ratios, but from the pay, I would want the next mayor to make more than what I'm making, I, I think it's only fair to the community as a size that we have grown to, so I would be supportive of that. Jason?
Given that our focus today is next year's budget, can I ask that we take any conversation about council compensation and set that to a future study session, and in terms of the mileage versus stipend, you know, I could argue it either way, I, I would ask, ask that staff come back with a recommendation that we can consider in our final budget, rather than trying to bait the, the dollars and cents tonight, I see that staff's done some math on, you know, trends over time, let staff come back with a suggestion that strikes a balance between, you know, the reduced impact on staff and not, you know, giving us more money than we're due, I know, we can argue that it's hard to keep track of mileage, but you can keep track of mileage, I mean, it's, it's not impossible, the reality is, if we can come out better and easier for folks, then I'm open to letting that happen, but I don't know that we need to try and solve the finer points in this conversation tonight.
I would agree, I think a study session is more apt for this conversation.
Just to be clear, I'm suggesting a study session for council compensation at some future point, and I'm suggesting that, given what I heard was, seemed to be some suggestion that the stipend might be a better way to go from both staff and council, I'm suggesting that staff come back. staff come back with the budget recommendation for us to consider at our upcoming meeting, a number based on their recommendation, not for us to sit here and try and nickel and dime tonight.
Well, we did, we did actually do some math, and this, this would be our recommendation.
The 275 and 225?
Right, based on looking at historical usage and reimbursements over time. Of course, it is all over the map. Some council members keep track of everything and submit for reimbursement, other council members don't. But based on our analysis, this would seem fair to all concerned, and, so this would be our recommendation.
Okay, that works.
Anyone else on this item? Saying none.
We will proceed to include in the budget the stipend for 2017. We can discuss at a future meeting if you would like to implement it before the end of the year, or at the start of 2017. We will proceed to include it in the budget for 2017, and can decide later if it's to be made effective sooner than that.
Do you want to say something there, councilwoman? Go ahead.
I fully understand the recommendation. And I know how many miles I drive, because I do live in the north, and 97% of everything I do is here. So I'm going to play Mr. Benson for a while, and say, you know, are we setting this up that council members are bickering? Because if you live here, I come down a couple times a month for youth commission, I come down for cultural council. Like I said, everything, the Parks and Rec meeting, once in a while we'll meet up north. But primarily, if you need to do anything at City Hall, it's the drive down here. So Northern Range residents probably drive just for those functions a lot, a lot more miles. So I'm not sure that future counselors will think that this is, I, I've been allowed to use the option, whether I wanted to submit or not. This, this doesn't, this makes everybody equal, and sometimes people don't feel they're equal. So I don't know how to take that into consideration if you would go to a stipend.
Does it make sense to, does it make sense to plan on this number? We don't, we're not committed to spend this number, and we're not going to implement this immediately. Because I agree, I mean, I'm, my round trip every Monday night is about 24 and 1/2 miles. It's not the same if you don't live north. So yeah, we can, I mean, that's, that's the challenge, right? So, but again, in light of the hour and the focus for tonight, I think we can, yeah, I agree.
That sounds fine. We'll have more discussion, either in the budget for 2017, or we'll, we'll talk as the council, as a study session.
Just to make sure I understand, we'll include funds in the budget for the stipend, but we won't implement until coming back to council to have a further discussion. As a practical matter, we have mileage baked into the budget already, so it's converting that mileage number to the stipend number. It does go up. It would go up, and we can, we'll bake that number in as part of the approved budget process, but bring back to you this fall how to implement if, and if you choose not to, that's okay too. We can continue to use funds budgeted for the stipend to do mileage reimbursement.
Right, thank you.
I think we've walked through the discussion items that we had, that we were tracking that would impact the budget. We can, when you're ready, put up on the screen the, the total of what you've decided tonight, what impact it'll have on that $217,000 remaining. But are there other items on the list that you still would like to discuss, because they may impact the budget? Or are there other, other items not on this list that we still need to discuss?
I do have one I want to bring up, and I don't know where we're at, the pavement management program for the streets in Irondale. As, as everybody knows, we've had, had concerns with the dust issues on 86th Avenue. I'm getting a lot of complaints from areas a little further to the east, up on Verbania, Valencia, up in, up in that neighborhood. A lot of them are saying, hey, why do you, why do you even bother coming to patch? It doesn't last, it's not going to stay, the roads are in terrible shape. We have taken that area over years ago through forced annexation, and the people weren't happy about it then, but they're still dealing with decaying, falling apart roads. And I'm, I'm not saying we need to go in and rebuild every road, but I am saying we need to at least have some attention in that area, because the, the longer we let it degrade and, and fall apart, the, the worse the, the complaints are getting. And I feel pretty bad for those folks that they actually need some maintenance on those roads. And I know we have $200 and some thousand dollars that we're talking about having left over in the budget. I would ask Maria, what do we have intended for that Irondale area in, in this cycle? And based on that, what is this council willing to do, if anything, to help with improvements in that Irondale area from the perspective of the roads are literally falling apart?
Before Maria answers, let me remind council, in this current budget, 2016, council did authorize funds to do what we would call an infrastructure study of that Irondale area, look at what would really be involved to permanently fix the roads by improving them, including drainage. So that's, in the 2016 work plan, has not, we have not begun that study yet, so it probably will start later this year and will run into next year. And my guess, my expectation is that that will generate some alternatives. It'll give us some rough idea of what we're talking about in terms of cost, and then explore some options for how to fund it. That's the permanent solution. I understand, though, Mayor, you're looking at, well, what can we do in the meantime beyond just throwing cold patch and holes? And I'll defer to Maria for what options, what other options we have, or anything you have planned for 17.
Yeah, so all the streets, or most of the streets in Irondale neighborhood are considered what we would consider unimproved. So they haven't been properly designed, they've been paved over the, over time, some of them are still gravel. And so until we improve them, they're not considered part of our pavement management system for ongoing maintenance. And our only work that we do out there would be reactive repairs. So filling potholes, trying to level them out, and it is an ongoing issue, especially given the amount of industrial property up there, and therefore the amount of truck traffic that we have. So we have done some work to do more extensive kind of patching in areas, trying to level out certain areas with, with minor repairs, but it's never enough. So an interim option that we could consider is just to do maybe a thin overlay on some of those roads, which would be a fairly low cost. So we were not upgrading them to our typical standards, but at least trying to level them out with some asphalt to try and then cut down on the amount of potholes that are developing. But it really is less about, I think, what, it's about the amount of traffic that we're getting out there, and that the pavement section just isn't thick enough. So in the long term, we would recommend, and through the study, it'll probably be some sort of special improvement district where the residents would need to, to participate together to really upgrade the streets. But in the interim, that's what we could consider, is some sort of thin overlay.
Maria, do you have any idea what an overlay, any sort of ballpark, or would we need to develop some sort of estimate?
Yeah, we'd have to put together some costs, maybe, maybe on like a linear foot basis or something like that, just to get a rough ballpark for the different streets up there.
And I, I think that's where I was going. I wasn't asking for, for all new roads up there, but the problem is, it's, I don't know how many years ago now, six, seven, eight, since it was annexed and forced annexed and taken over. And those people have waited for some form of repair, and just haven't had it. And even with the dust abatement, I know, you know, it's scheduled to happen a couple of times a year on 86th Avenue, and those people are sending me photos with the dust caked on the siding of their businesses and stuff. And I, I was looking for something like that as an interim, because as we study things, we go, okay, let's appropriate some money in next year's budget to study the roads up here. By the time they get any relief, it's another couple of years down the road. And if we could do something in the short term, and I would recommend any of the council members to go over there and actually drive on some of those roads. Those, those folks have been hesitant to even contact us, because they haven't, they haven't felt like part of the city, because they were forced annexed. But now they're, they're pleading for some kind of help. And I actually literally got phone calls when you were just recently up there patching on one of the roads up Verbania or Valencia, and the people just said, you know, why bother? Why don't you just let it go back to being a gravel road, and, and let us deal with it, because none of it's helping? And, and it, it makes you feel like you're, you're not doing your part. And so if there's an interim solution, it's kind of like the, the pipe under, under Peoria, that where the road's been closed for a month and a half now, and we, we can't get anywhere because of the ditch company. And that's why I made that suggestion, you know, maybe we put the plates. And if we could have done something like that in the interim, and gained a month and a half of keeping the road open before we got the, until we got the permits and not impact the residents, that we could have closed it for the amount of time needed to make the repairs, and it wouldn't have had the, the outreach impacts that it's had on the community by having the road closed. And that's all I'm looking for, is, is just to bridge, to bridge that maintenance until we get the, the assessment done to determine what needs to happen with an SID, or what, whatever it is that fixes the problem permanently, so that those people know that they do live in the city, and they are paying taxes, and that services matter to them. And, and I wouldn't even bring this up if it hadn't been for the outpouring efforts of that neighborhood because of the effects of the roads. So I'm just asking for a simple fix, like the overlay situation, to get us by until we have a plan, if we can, if the council would consider that.
Yeah, we would not be able to include that in the budget, but what we can do, separate from the budget, is spend some staff time, develop an estimate, and bring it back to council with some funding alternatives for a reappropriation.
That would be acceptable to me. Is the council okay with that direction?
Yes.
Are, are there some others? Any other projects that people want to bring up, Steve?
Yes, I wanted to bring up the Buffalo Run course items. And I, I wasn't there for the study session. Fortunately, one of my grandchildren was born that night, so I wasn't able to make that meeting. And I apologize for that, since I brought this up. And, you know, I understand about the, the pro shop television and all that, and the fact that, you know, there's many golfers that go in there, and during the golf season, there's, you have different golf events on, and there's, there used to be a TV, and there's not one in there. But suggestions I'm making as far as having a TV in there, I had sent out a digital signage, there are commercial TVs that you can do digital signage. So if you have like, maybe different prices of golf, information bases that you would have in those TVs, just like you would do when you go into a, a restaurant, and they have the menu up there. Well, these are digital TVs that can be split-screen, so you have information on one side, maybe TV on the other, or the whole thing just being digital messaging. In, in that we, we, we're going to, you know, as far as a restaurant, we need to invest in commercial TVs, because they last a lot longer. And I'm not saying they're going to change all the TVs, but when they go out, replace them with commercial TV, because those TVs are meant to be on 24/7, a long period of time. Because I know when a golf course opens up early in the morning to late at night. I see on here it is Sunday Ticket was done in 2011. Well, at that time, our, our restaurant was not producing, with revenues around a million dollars. It was closely either half or less than that. And then the fact that, in this day and age, we don't have a sports bar, our sit-down restaurant, that provides this kind of entertainment, but we do at our present golf course, especially with the expansion that we just did here in January, as far as changing facility inside, making it more suitable and entertaining for those type of venues. So I'm advocating for 2016. Season hasn't started yet, that we do the Sunday Ticket, and see what it's like for this year. And, because, you know, we can't promise anybody a, a sports bar. I mean, that's, it's going to happen, but it's not here yet. But let's, let's see what it's like if we go ahead and purchase Sunday Ticket to do the sports bar entertainment. I, I think that it's, would be good timing, and then see how, how it goes for this year, and if we can get it for next year, until something comes in for that sort of entertainment. I, I do appreciate the, the credit card for the course. Most places you go, type of golf course that we have, credit cards are accepted, and I think that's a great to go forward with that, because that's revenue we're losing. So I'm glad to see that. But, but as far as the TVs, I think we should invest in, in commercial grade with the option of digital signage.
I, I will defer to staff on the configuration of the pro shop, and whether or not a, a TV or digital signage makes sense in that context. In terms of running the, the Sunday Ticket in the restaurant itself, I'll just relate a dining experience I had this last week, and the fact that I couldn't hardly hear my family sitting at one of the tables in the bar, due to the overall noise level in the restaurant. And this was on a week, this was the Friday night meal. Most every table in the place was full, and just the dint of conversation was such with the acoustics in there, that it was difficult to converse. So the thought of crossing the line into sports bar mode, to me, I don't think we have an environment that, it, it will force us over a line that I don't think we can recover. If we turn into a sports bar, we lose a family sit-down alternative, and a place to converse and do business. If the objective is to have the NFL Sunday Ticket on silently, then so be it. But I want to make sure we differentiate the things that you're asking for. One is the cost of displays for the pro shop, and potentially the rest of the facility. Unless those TV, the TV in the main area, or the TVs are on their way out, I would say that it's not time to think about buying them, but a future purchasing decision using a, a commercial display makes sense. I'll defer to staff to bring that to the, the council at the time that that's needed. I'm not going to debate the cost of a Sunday Ticket for a season as an experiment, but I just, I do want to caution the environment, and the flavor of the environment. I think, again, what is the character of that envi, of that eatery supposed to be? Is it supposed to be Buffalo Wild Wings with TVs, and, you know, sports viewing? Or is it supposed to be a sit-down restaurant, a cocktail dinner, whatever, with your family, with your golf buddies? So I, again, I'm not, I, I don't think the TVs make sense to spend money on. I'll look for feedback from other council members on the Sunday Ticket.
JD.
Well, on the first one, the TV in the pro shop, Mr. Douglas and I already had a conversation. I do not see a need for that. I don't even like the idea. My explanation was, is we do have a bar and a restaurant that I would prefer you spent your time hanging out in. If you are just hanging out in the pro shop to watch television, you're in the way of business, of people wanting to come in, pay for their green fees, for our pros to speak to you, for you to feel freely to walk around looking at the display cases. So I- looking at the display cases. So, I truly don't like that idea. And I really, when I go to Buffalo Run, it is almost an intimate little table setting that you set with your friends or your family and have conversation. I do like the sports idea, but I'm not sure it's appropriate there. Maybe in the future, if we have lots of other options up north for family dining and this and that, it may tend to go into that direction of bringing in more just that atmosphere. But I think right now, you would be taking away from that family atmosphere that so many of us enjoy up there, where you can go and just have conversation and see each other instead of rooting for the football team. So, Mr. Douglas, I'm sorry, but I really just don't like that idea. And I'm with Jason of not replacing televisions while they're still working. And, you know, honestly, I've got to tell you, since we've talked, I don't really see people paying attention to the television, especially in the dining area. I don't know, I really haven't seen that.
Okay. When I was talking about the TVs, and because right now, they play the Brock game, they do play footballs, whatever, Saturday sports, whatever. There's no sound, it's just for viewing. It's just the same kind of atmosphere it is right now, except that you just have choices. So, they just turn the TV, and they do that right now. They do, they turn the TV to different channels. And just that the Sunday Ticket gives you more of an option as far as teams. And it's just a tryout for 2016. They did it in 2011, but we're in a different era now as far as the need and what people are asking for. So, I would just ask to entertain that for 2016. Give it a try. It doesn't hurt to put it out there. And let's, you know, do a survey, see what the people like. That way, going forward 2017, next year, let the people, you know, play with this and hear from them. And as far as the TVs, I wasn't saying switch those out only when they start to be replaced. We replace them with commercial grade. And as far as the pro shop goes, it was more of a digital signage, not necessarily a live TV. But it's just information-based, you can have loops on there as far as golf lessons, things like that.
No, I understand.
That's all.
I do know that we included our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee when we were doing the update to Buffalo Run. I don't remember that ever being on the list, anything about televisions or a sports bar. So, I'm not sure the time is right right now, in my opinion.
All right. Renee?
There's two different subjects on this. The sports bar, it is not, but there are a lot of people that were there watching the Olympics and do watch football when they're in there. It couldn't hurt to do the NFL program for one year to see if people would come in on Sunday to see their teams play. If that's the nearest bar within the area where they could get to, and they could actually have a TV turned to see their specific team play, I think that we could see if it would be an increase in business. If it isn't, one season isn't going to hurt us. And, but I did notice a lot of people in there when, I've been up there for about three events that were watching the Olympics, and they watched golf, and they watched football. I can imagine on, on the game on Saturday, there were a whole bunch of people in there watching the game. And the longer the game goes, the more they eat and drink. And so, I'm thinking, it can't hurt, especially with the games that start early back east with the breakfast business and everything. For if people know that they can come in and request their game, first come, first served, they, there's three, one, two, three, four different TVs in there, that they can actually watch four different games at the same time if they have the NFL package. And I, I mean, it's an experiment to see if it increases business. I would think that, and you'd never turn them up. And that's one thing that, all the TVs are turned down, and you have to watch them and figure out, and most people know what's going on. TV in the pro shop, I would be totally against that, because it would be people in the pro shop that aren't spending money just standing around. And if it comes to time that we need signage board in there, I think that Paul will come to us and say, this is a request I would like to put in. When the TVs start breaking down, to go to a commercial TV might be a great ideal. But right now, with the TVs all functional, let's go with what we have. And, but I would, as an experiment, I would say, put the NFL package in, because you would not believe how many people up there you see every weekend in different jerseys that would love to see their team be able to play, especially the early games back east.
All right. Rick?
Yes, I'll weigh in here for a short time. I kind of agree with Renee just said, in a way, with the pro shop one and the TVs in the other area. And I, like as Jason said, check with staff, check with staff. Well, there's a good point right there. Rob and would be more than happy to tell you when Denver's playing or who's ever playing with the sports teams, if they have the people coming in to eat, or are they staying at home to watch their TVs. So, I also say, check with staff, and let them give us a recommendation whether or not they think this would increase the bar business.
Anyone else? Doesn't give you much of a consensus there, but what do you want?
Again, our recommendation is that we don't do either one. But we're talking about fairly small amounts in the budget. So, if there is some consensus on council, we're happy with whatever council wants to do. Although, I'm not sure if there was a consensus.
Is there, what does the council feel about the Sunday Ticket? A consensus? Do you want it? Do you not want it?
I would say yes.
Okay. How about is there a consensus to have the staff of the golf course give us their opinion on the Sunday Ticket? Well, so you want to hear from the staff? Everybody wants to hear from the staff?
Yes. Well, if I could, this actually is the staff recommendation.
Okay.
From.
So, the staff is saying they don't want either, right?
Well, the staff recommendation is, they don't think the Sunday Ticket's gonna increase business.
That's the golf car staff we're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's the staff recommendation that we've provided to. And again, it didn't sound like there was a consensus to add the TV back into the pro shop either, but that's the origination of the staff recommendation. Again, if it's something you want to do on a trial basis, we're not talking a lot of dollars. It'll come out of the 2016 budget for the most part, anyway. The reason the cost is higher is we have a commercial account through DirecTV. So, we were just chatting on the side here, you or I can get it for a couple hundred dollars for the season, but commercial accounts are more expensive.
Right.
If I can add to that, the commercial account is based on the capacity of whatever the restaurant bar is. So, that's, that was a direct quote that staff got.
All right. So, staff recommendation is no. Is the council, is?
You know, in 2011, there was crappy food in there, too. You know, I mean, I'm going to tell you, let's be honest, it wasn't the greatest food for people to come in and eat. The food now is what the draw is. So, it's a different time. This isn't 2011. This is, what?
All right. So, who's supportive of the Sunday Ticket? Okay, I got, I got four Sunday Tickets?
All right, help me out.
All right. So, it looks like you have direction now on Sunday Ticket.
We will get it for half the season.
Okay. All right.
We'll, we'll go ahead and do it again on a, on a trial basis, and we'll try to collect some information.
If it's a bust, we won't do it again.
Understood.
All right. Anything else? Let's go home. Council McCarson?
McCarson. Uh, McCarson.
Can we get a study session on the fees and charges for?
Yes, we are planning a fairly robust process to take staff and council through a broader discussion of fees and charges, and all the things in which we charge a fee. And I think we, without pulling that slide up, we have, the plan is to do it in time to have a thoughtful discussion about fees for the new recreation center in advance of the new recreation center opening. So, the broader fee discussion would include a discussion of fees and charges for the new rec center. And so, we would look to have some direction after going through this process towards the end of next summer.
Okay, thank you. Well, all right. That's fine.
It might be a good point to put up on the screen the sum total of the decisions the council made tonight, both so you see the total amount and to recap that we heard you correctly on changes we need to make to the budget. Could somebody put that up? Is it possible to put it up on the big screen as opposed to the little screen? While they're pulling that information up, was there, were there any other subjects that we needed to discuss tonight that we haven't yet?
Saying none.
All right, let us pull up that total just as a recap and to make sure we heard you correctly. And with that, I think we'll be done. We do have it on the small screen. Can we, can we make it bigger? So, the items we have is to explore the yard waste program. We don't have a cost. We're going to research that, bring some options back to council, but it won't be factored in the budget. If council likes to do something, we can do it as a reappropriation. You did decide to increase the QCF allocation from 120 to 145,000, so an additional 25,000. The council sponsorships went up by 600. Council vehicle compensation, so the delta there is 15,900. That would be the increase in the budget to shift from the current mileage reimbursement, which is 9,000, to the stipend of 24,900. So, we will include that. And the Irondale, again, the thin overlay, that won't be included in the budget. We would bring that back again as a separate action. So, then that effect of changes to the budget tonight means we can make those changes, and we still have $175,000 left, which is a good position to be in.
I would agree.
Did I, did I say that right? Right. The two unknowns, we would have to consider separately, and part of that analysis will be to explore possible funding sources. I don't believe the general fund would be able to cover certainly the overlay, probably the yard waste, but we can bring that back to you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would like to leave that there, because with the DOJ coming in and that evaluation coming in in six months, none of us know what those recommendations would be and what the cost factor would be. So, at least we have some money there to plan ahead.
I'd agree. Some seed funds to be able to react along the way would be great.
And when we bring back these other two items, as the DOJ assessment progresses, will, the picture will become clearer what additional investments might be needed.
All right. Okay. Will we have a meeting before September 14th?
Uh, yes. There is a study session and a special meeting the night of September 12th. And for the mayor's benefit, since the mayor wasn't at last week's meeting, there is a special meeting after the study session on the 12th to consider a contract for a transportation study in the Vasquez Corridor. Remind me what else is on for action on the 12th? Council awarded the contract for Highway 2. We do need to move some money around. That reappropriation ordinance will be on September 12th, special meeting, and the city manager's evaluation.
Finally.
And on the 14th of September at Adam City High School, they're going to have the first public meeting for the assessment committee from the Department of Justice. So...
However, I don't know that
They want us in?
Staff and council members are invited.
So, their intent is to sit with the residents of the community without staff or elected officials there.
Okay.
So, they can receive some unsolicited.
Unbiased.
Unbiased comments, yeah.
All right.
There is, there is no meeting next week. It's the fifth Monday of August, and no meeting the following week, which is Labor Day. So, three weeks until we meet again.
So, before we close out, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the, all of the staff. It's, I know how much work goes into what you have brought before us tonight to make sure we have a good quality budget, and our residents are taken care of from this perspective of the financial part of our duties. So, it means a lot. The efforts, I know, have been ongoing throughout the year, and I want to make sure you all know you're appreciated for the jobs that you do for our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if there be nothing further to come before us during our budget retreat, we are adjourned. And one last congratulations to Mr. Sheasley.